Regular county council meeting order, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Present.
Councillor Mellon.
Present.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Present.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Present.
Councillor Gardner.
Present. We can all rise for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. That is a great public forum which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to open the meeting up to public comment. We kindly ask that all in-person public comment is limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes for a group spokesman. Please keep your comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. In the event that questions are posed to the council, we will note your questions in the meeting minutes. And we refer them or revert the questions to the appropriate department or staff for follow-up and response. Is there anyone here that would like to speak during the public comment section to the council? See no one uh coming forward? Is there anybody online, Dustin?
There is not.
Okay, then we will close this portion of the public comment section and go into the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move we accept the consent agenda.
Second, there's a motion, second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda, uh there is no old business, we'll move into the new business. Uh under new business ordinance nineteen twenty-one, this is the Franciscan Alliance P U D amendment. Uh manager, uh Anderson, is there anything to add to the memo?
No, but for the. No, but for the benefit of those in the public, this is an amendment to the planned unit development of Franciscan Hospital on Superior off of Calumet. What they are uh proposing to be changed is uh height of their building. Their hospital complex originally contemplated a six-story tower and a four-story tower. The F A A has uh provided guidance to them that the six-story tower was not acceptable. So they went to two five-story towers, so six and four, five and five, if you're a Euclid player, it's all the same. And they also changed the location of the heli- helipad and the central plant uh for their mechanics. This has been at uh Plan Commission and has uh all the minutes findings of fact attached as well.
Approved by the Plan Commission.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Um I think at this time, um the memo that's uh from planning director um doesn't specifically state, but it does look like we need a um. There's a rec or we need to uh have a motion to ordinance nineteen twenty-one. An ordinance to amend the Franciscan Alliance Plan Unit Development P C twenty-three dash one six. So, second, there's a motion, a second, is there any further discussion or questions?
I would just say when the reviews that have come through the Plan Commission, it is really indeed a reconfiguration of the site. We've asked about, you know, square footage and capacity of the site, none of that is really materially changing. Um just following the F A A regulations.
There are no problems, they get a tail bed of the airport.
Apparently not.
Apparently not. Very good, is there any other discuss- uh discussion or questions? Any none, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the uh agenda is item B, which is ordinance nineteen twenty-two, this is for first reading. This is amendment number three to the twenty twenty-three salary ordinance.
Yeah.
Oh, I.
Yeah.
I took earlier.
Yeah.
I took an earlier agenda, I'm sorry.
Thing is an interlocal agreement.
Okay. My apologies, this is what for Main Street?
No, this is between the town of Munster and Lake.
Okay, okay, so that's um.
This is a.
This is a late uh agenda item.
That's.
Yes, this is, this is a late agenda item requested by the County of Lake, State of Indiana. Uh but it's a good uh late addition because they are offering to enter into an intra-local agreement with us uh to the end of giving us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purposes of reconditioning our water tanks.
Very good. And what we need to do is to approve the joint in the local agreement, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Move to approve the local, the interlocal agreement.
Second motion.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um I noticed in talking about the Calumet water tanks, is it, that's the scope of that, has that work been done already?
It has been done, but we can invoice uh the county and then once uh those funds are reseeded, they'll be used for future water projects.
That's great, to receive four million dollars from the county, much appreciated.
Very good, thank you, see no further discussion or question, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Look at the screen first before I move into the next item. Now we're on order here, okay, so item uh C, which is Main Street Interlocal Patching Agreement, uh another uh inner governmental agreements here, uh, Tom Andrew Anderson, anything to add to this project?
Uh no, I think we should be proud of it, uh we got together with our neighbors and we all agreed to be uh good neighbors to each other and fix our our common enemy, which is potholes on Main Street. Uh this will be an interlocal agreement with Dyer, Shererville and Munster, uh Dyer will be the lead agency and will invoice us. And uh we will share equally the cost of improving Main Street. This, for those longtime uh fans of Main Street, the town successfully submitted a grant application to the Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission some time ago to receive funding for engineering and construction to rebuild Main Street completely. N R P C split that project in half because they wanted to give half the money to some other jurisdiction, as is, you know, their right to do. So phase one, which is from Columbia Sheffield to Hart Ditch, is underdesigned right now and is winding down. And we're uh looking at construction within the next eighteen months. Uh that does not do anything for the eastern portion of Main Street from uh Hart Ditch to the Highland Town Line. Uh that road is in uh rough shape in certain spots, those spots that it will be addressed are in the memo. Uh Hart Ditch to Woodhollow, Woodhollow to Cypress predominantly. Uh and this will get us to the point where we rebuild Main Street Phase Two.
Very good. If we approve that interlocal agreement with Shererville and Dyer Patch up Main Street between Hart Ditch and the Highland Town Line. A second. There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion or questions?
They've been, this is a good uh interlocal um cooperation and just noting that half of the road is in the town of Munster and the other two towns only give you know, part of that, it's quite nice to have only a third of the farm.
Very good. Seeing no other questions, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes, you know, thanks to the staff for preaching it.
Thank you, uh mo- most thanks should go to our uh interim Public Works Director Jill Di Damasso, who took the lead on this.
Thank you, moving along to item D or um yeah, D pavement patching, White Oak Lane and Janus Lane. Uh anything to add to this memo?
There's a problem, we're gonna fix it.
Mr. President, I have moved to approve the quote from Site Services Inc. to perform pavement patching at White Oak Avenue and Janus Lane in the amount of twenty-three thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Second motion.
There's a motion, a second, and yeah, this is the repair that water main caused a major issue a couple of weeks ago.
Yep.
Just make uh just a larger repair than the typical water main.
Mm-hmm. And Mr. President, in one four four, um I'm very happy to see this, this is right outside of Elliot School and it is a huge buckle um in the middle of the road, kids, kids trying to ride their bikes down the bike path right there, which is impacted by it. And it's a, you know, kind of a severe, out of the ordinary um situation for water mains, so. Been asking about this one, I'm glad to see it.
Very good, seeing no other questions or comments, uh roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to the Public Works Department, as we look at additional costs for the two thousand twenty-three Ford L Ford three fifty street division. Do you see the memo in front of you from uh Jill Di Damasso, Dustin, anything to add to that?
Well, in the case of stolen valor, Mike Duvish asked a great question before the meeting and I'll explain. Uh his question was, if there's a change order now, should we go back to the original bids for the trucks? Because it might be less expensive to go to uh the original bids. Uh Lindco is the uh third-party uh company that installs lift gates, hydraulics and the plow mounts and is used by all the uh dealers that would sell us this truck. So this change order is for the things that we have not bought yet, so we have bought the truck, this is for the uh the outfitting of that asset for uh snow control. So those prices have varied and that's what this change order is for. And since it, every one of the bidders originally indicated that they would use Lindco, this changer would be applied to any other bid alternately and we would not be able to save any money.
Thank you, thank you, Mike, for asking that question earlier.
I didn't know how it affected everything.
Very good, thanks. There is a recommendation in front of the council?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the price increase of three thousand sixty-two dollars to Lindco for the new Ford F three fifty truck with state fed to replace unit three one four for a total cost of sixty-six thousand nine hundred fifteen from the original price of sixty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars.
A second, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is the lead and asbestos abatement at Calumet Avenue Pumping Station.
So uh keeping with the theme.
So I gotta look at. I just printed this out this afternoon, I thought it was doing pretty good. Um, okay, so let's go back to um the two thousand twenty-three forty-fifth street paving changer number one.
This is largely uh a function of a remobilization, a planned remobilization of work. You'll recall uh when we paved forty-fifth West uh from Calumet to the uh town line to the west, the portion around the tracks was not touched. That was because it was very, very challenging to get a uh a flagman from the C S X Railroad. You cannot enter there right away without a flagman. Uh Nick D was also having challenges uh securing a flagman, they have months out uh to be scheduled. Our contractor was ready uh and we chose to move forward with Milestone and elect to come back. What we were able to do was share the cost of the flagman with Nick D, uh so there was one mobilization of that asset by C S X. But it did require uh a change order for Milestone to come back out. Now, we did not know when that flagman would be available. So we determined that it would be better to pave the road when we knew the asphalt plants would be open rather than roll the dice and miss that window and have to wait to the next paving season potentially. The downside risk of waiting uh for that flagman to do one monolithic pour was deemed too too risky considering the 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 state of the road and the uh desire to have that done in a timely fashion. So that's what this change order is for.
There is a recommendation in front of the council.
Mr. President, I move to approve change order number one to the contract for the twenty twenty-three West forty-fifth street paving in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars and fifteen cents.
Second, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Now they have the agenda in front of me, uh item G, public work, thanks chief. Uh lead and asbestos abatement at Calumet Avenue Pumping Station?
Uh we are in the process of reconditioning all our water assets uh above ground right now. And the contractor that was going to install a uh a modern chlorinator at the Calumet Pub Station at Calumet and Broadmoor asked a reasonable question, hey, this really old station, uh does it have any lead paint on the inside or any asbestos anywhere? And we said, I don't know, so we found out and we do. Uh so this this uh contract with M and O Environmental Services is to abate those so that the contractor can come in and install the work previously approved by council.
The asbestos was in the building?
Uh yes.
Okay.
Not in the water.
I mean, well, no, but there's some planning.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. President, I move we approve the proposal uh by M and O Environmental Services in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred dollars for the remediation of lead paint and asbestos at the Calumet Avenue Pumping Station.
Second motion.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
Would just add on to clarify that the lead paint and asbestos had in no way impacts the water and simply the building.
That is very correct and a good clarification.
Very good, uh seeing no more, uh no questions or no further questions or um discussion, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to resolution twenty-one sixteen, this is a confirmatory resolution regarding Centennial Village.
This is the punctuation mark on the residential tax abatement with uh Centennial Village that began earlier this spring. This is a confirmatory resolution uh that uh confirms the declaratory resolution that you passed earlier. It says essentially the same thing uh only with confirmatory at the beginning instead of declaratory.
I move we approve resolution twenty-one sixteen, a resolution of the town of Munster, Indiana, confirming the that's its designation of the economically viable legislation area, preliminary approving the deduction from assessed value of new state power grid programs.
Second, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? Any none, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is resolution twenty-one seventeen, this is from the Munster Police Department, vehicle lease leasing for new vehicles. There is a memo here from Lieutenant Goldman, is there anything to add to this uh memo, Chief and or Wendy?
No, no, we shat around, got a little better rate, so we tried things a little differently.
That's good.
We authorize the police department to purchase four squads from Black Star Public Funding Corp.
Second.
Second motion.
Very good, there's a motion, a second, any discussion?
I just have one question, I see that we're financing the this purchase, is there, what's the benefit of doing that versus, do we not have the cash on hand?
But we can, we, chief, we buy these at the end, correct, in the lease, or we?
Yeah.
We took them.
Yeah, in the, in the lease, there are.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we just want, it's, there are one, two, three, four, five, six installments of fifty-two thousand and those have interest carrying costs. And we're already paying interest on the bonds that we get for the money, it's like, I'm just wondering if there's a financial advantage to.
This comes out of a different pot than if we would have taken it out of capital, so. Yeah.
It's like rotating along, if this, if this world is ever, yeah, a billionaire stock.
Will, will this simply replace four other squads or will there be more in the inventory?
No, that's replacing squads, they have to be replaced.
Yeah, first, questions, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Now, now we go to the ordinance nineteen twenty-two, amendment number three to the two thousand twenty-three salary ordinance.
Sure, I'm gonna say a few things about this, if we, this, this came out of um some conversations we've been having internally, both at the staff level and at the department head level about ways we can enhance our employees' experience here at the town of Munster. And one of them is that the suggestion that we increase the holiday bonus, which has been one hundred dollars since before the year two thousand. And the suggestion, based on calculation for inflation, the amount has been recommended, we increase it to two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, this will change for the second reading because the salary of the clerk treasurer cannot change in any given year and that extra one twenty-five would change that position salary. So we will rewrite and amend the second reading, so just so you're aware of that.
Um, Mr. President, I move to hear ordinance nineteen twenty-two on first reading and set a second reading for the next regular.
Second motion.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
I'm sure Stan will be.
Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Happy holidays and yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to uh item K, which is the acceptance of the two thousand twenty-four health insurance rates. Anything to add to the the memo?
Uh, yes, uh in twenty twenty-three, council uh changed the employee in town uh cost share from eighty-two point five and seventeen point five town employee respectively to a ninety-ten split. Uh we see that proposed here again, the ninety-ten split in twenty twenty-four. And I am pleased to bring you uh a thirteen point six uh percent decrease in the costs of health insurance premiums to the town of Munster. Thanks to our uh involvement in the Indiana uh Medical Trust. I sit on a board there and I am also on the underwriting committee there and we were able to uh design a plan that rewards uh municipalities that have consecutive uh years of exposure that is below their uh projected loss ratio. There were uh in the trust two municipalities, we were one of them. So it basically resets uh our actuarial clock, uh gives us the actual cost of uh our health insurance and basically gives us a new base. So as a result of that, between the year twenty twenty-two and the year twenty twenty-four, an employee in the town of Munster that elects for family health insurance is paying two hundred and fifty-seven dollars less per month for their health insurance uh in twenty twenty-four than they were in twenty-two. And that's about, let's call it thirty-one hundred dollars a year. So I'm very pleased to bring this to you, uh I think we can be very proud of our involvement in the A Medical Trust. Uh also good, but not nearly as good as that, uh vision and dental rates stay the same.
Mr. President, I move to authorize town manager to adopt the health and vision rates for the town of Munster as presented.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
I just have one question on the table that is presented, it's on the screen. What's the difference between the first set of rows and the second set of rows?
Uh are you talking about the gray and the white, it's only for visual.
First, for example, family is five twenty-five three and the second is for ninety-five, six, one, two, one hundred and twenty, one, two.
Second one is the high deductible point.
Okay, so low deductible and high deductible.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
That is a poorly labeled table by yours truly, I I apologize for the confusion.
Yes.
Yes.
I just wanted to share that in the conversations we've had about the benefits, multiple employees have shared their appreciation for the the adjustment right here to ninety-ten. It it was noticed and it was appreciated, so.
One could know this is about thirteen annual bonuses, holiday bonuses that people would get.
Glad we were able to come to that ninety-ten as well because and then with this two hundred and fifty-seven dollar decrease for the one example you gave, um it's material because as we all see when we go to the grocery store, those prices are smack us in the face every time, you know. So it it's really, we'll see that we have some.
That's half a week of groceries for two teenage boys.
So, glad it ran into this.
Very good. Any other discussion, seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Then letter I, the food and beverage quantification, there's a memo in the packet. Uh, that you or Tom Andrew Anderson, anything to add to your memo?
Uh to the memo, no, but just a a brief synopsis. Uh there are a number of planned and desired capital improvements to the town, uh including a potential collaboration with the school town. Uh a revamp of other facilities here that uh is desirous to the 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 town. And so you got a lot of wants, you got a lot of needs and you have uh a limited uh amount of revenue to meet those wants and needs. Uh one of the things the General Assembly has done uh in a unpredictable manner is give uh municipalities, either counties, cities or towns, the ability to leverage uh a food and beverage tax. Uh they have said yes to some, no to others. Uh and the way the General Assembly is loosely and anecdotally approaching that question from municipalities is uh they they will have one omnibus bill per year. And those uh jurisdictions desirous of a food and beverage tax uh should be focused primarily on municipal improvement, uh including uh parks and tourists, tourism uh opportunities. So uh we have an opportunity to partner with a neighboring jurisdiction uh to advocate for ourselves on this if it, if we desire it. Uh and if we do uh want to do that, it is imperative to know exactly what we're talking about. How much are we talking about, what's the magnitude of the impact of this potential uh resource? And from there, we can more accurately uh winnow that list of needs down to what we can uh reasonably accomplish. Uh so especially if you're going down to Indianapolis, you're gonna sit with one of the uh legislators. Uh you should be prepared, you should say this is gonna spin off X and we're gonna use X for A, B and C. Uh it is a surefire way to lose credibility and to uh do no service to the town if you don't know the answers to those questions. So to know the answer to that question uh is uh is is complex, it's it's beyond the scope of a a staff. And there are firms that do this, uh policy analytics is one of those. Their principal was the former director of the Indiana Department of Revenue. Uh I would say that they are uniquely situated to do this work and do it swiftly. Uh and so before you, for your consideration, is a letter of engagement with policy analytics to uh quantify what the potential impacts of a food and beverage tax would be to the town of Munster uh for a cost not to exceed ten thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. President, I move that we authorize town manager to execute the letter of engagement with policy analytics and will see to project potential town revenue from a local food and beverage tax for a cost not to exceed ten thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? That's, sorry if I missed it, but is there any, I don't know, it's gonna take them to get this analyzed for us?
I did not include that in the memo, but in discussions with Mr. Sheldrake, he said they could probably turn it around within fourteen days.
So this will be a part of us again next one.
It would be, if 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 it is so desirous of all parties.
I, I see it. Mr. President, but the question.
Yes.
Just had some comments on on this one, um Councillor Mellon, you mentioned getting smacked in the face at the grocery store with inflation, I've been thinking about the impacts on our residents. Over the past couple of years, we have necessarily increased our water rates. Uh inflation has been impacting everyone, we've successfully passed a necessary and part of the referendum to support the schools. Um and there are continuing to be some economic uncertainty going forward. Um pursuing an tax rate increase at this time would be, seems like an irreversible sort of tax rate, once it's there, uh it will be there for time in memoriam. And I'm also considering the potential impact on our small business community, restaurants and such, it would be cheaper to go to uh restaurants that would be in neighboring towns that didn't have a food and beverage tax. Um might make it more undes- a little bit less desirable to open up. Um, might make it more undes- a little bit less desirable to open up a new restaurant or beverage facility uh in town of Munster. And so it could be, could have a negative impact on, on business, on, on our business community. Um, and so for those reasons. I, I'd almost rather see what Hammond is able to accomplish down the state and see what the impact of that is. Um, and so I'm not for, in favor of passing a, a tax increase at this time. Therefore, I would also be in favor of spending the eleven thousand dollars for that study.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Yeah, we're, we're talking about it first is one quarter of one percent.
We are, so that's a good question, Dr. Schoen. Uh, in a county that has an innkeeper's tax in which Lake County does. The A municipality may ask only up to one uh, one percent on uh eligible expenses. Groceries or not, uh just to be clear, an eligible expense for the food and beverage tax. Uh, so the state has said you can, you can, if the state general assembly says you can. Uh, those uh additional food and beverage taxes that municipalities may have permitted levy. Uh, come in quarter uh percent increments, so either point two-five, point five, point seven-five, one. Uh. I don't think it would be a heavy lift to ask them to do all four increments in conversations. Uh, and what the deliverable will be is uh an analysis of a point five and a one percent food and beverage tax.
Very good. Other questions or comments? Well, not, not rebuttal, but the, the water rate increase that you talked about was done before a lot of this inflation came. So it, it was solving a problem at prices before the inflation. We still have to, I mean, because of the inflation, it's still gonna cost the town more. And I say where money's going to have to come from someplace.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just considering the resident perspective and a food and beverage, beverage tax can be a sort of regressive balance. Sure, hiring some people may go out to eat more often, but uh this is still something that have a higher impact on lower income residents. Uh, and also, you know, just thinking about small businesses. I don't know, though we talk to them, if they would rather have this or not. And say if we do go through and do it and get the information um to make sure that. When we create the fund, we're using it for tourism or for other things that will bring more visitors to our town to help support the businesses. And lower the percent of this tax that's actually paid by uh Munster resident. And so I think there are probably some good ways to, to do it, but that's just where I'm standing right now about not wanting to pass a tax hike. I'm sorry, in the end of uh, in the end of this year.
Good, thank you. Any other comments? Again, again, I think it's, it's important that we, we look at uh all poss- possibilities, especially with some of the capital projects that we have in front of us. Uh, I think this is a, a minor amount of money to spend to try to get more information about a potentially beneficial project. And get them a beneficial uh arena for us to be entering into. So uh I think it's, it's a good thing, I thank you for moving this along. And uh if there's no other questions, uh roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon, yes. Counselor Tulowitzki.
No.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. That is letter I, is there anything else on the agenda?
There's nothing.
Um, is there any, any items under the report section, counselors? Yes, or treasure miss?
I have two things I'd like to share. First of all, I'd like to thank Public Works for the beautiful deflectors up here. It's much more comfortable and nicely done. In the audience, you can't even see it, I'm sure, but very nice, so compliments to you.
Just in time. See the smile.
Yes, I got a thumbs up back there, so we greatly appreciate it, thank you to the guys too. Um, the other day I wanted to bring up is that the um, the community event that we have hold. This will be our third annual Light the Night Tree layer lighting ceremony. The tree lighting portion is becoming almost aside to the rest of the fun and festivities. This is a multi-civic organizational event. We have people calling to participate, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. Uh, Munster Parks and Recreation has stepped up and they're really helping out with this, this year. The Munster Civic Foundation, the Munster Education Foundation and the Munster Chamber of Commerce are working together to make this a great event. We are going to have Santa and Mrs. Claus return, light the tree, we're gonna have a bounce house. Uh, we're adding pony rides, uh fireworks will be back. I saw it will have characters and it should be a very nice evening. The Chamber has received approval to sell hot mold wine as a fundraiser, so we've got a lot going on. The event will, a little longer hours this year from five to seven P M on Friday, December first. And I will probably mention this again on twenty.
Very good. Other reports or portfolio reports from the council? Seeing none, announcements, uh our town council meetings will begin at seven o'clock, plus otherwise noted. And our next town council meeting is Monday, November twentieth. Uh, seeing no other business in front of us, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. So, second, there's a motion of a second, all in favor, say aye. And then we will move into the redevelopment commission, regular meeting on November ninth. I'll call that meeting to order, roll call please.
Commissioner Schoen.
Present.
Commissioner Mellon.
Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki.
Present.
Commissioner Kulturitis.
Present.
Commissioner Gardner.
Present. Uh, public comment, is there anybody here that would like to speak to the redevelopment commission during public comment section of the meeting? Seeing none, uh we'll move into the consent agenda. Move we accept the consent agenda. I'll second, there's a motion of a second, uh any discussion with regards to the consent agenda? Seeing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Schoen.
Yes.
Commissioner uh Mellon, yes. Commissioner Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gardner.
Yes. Uh, there is no old business, no new business, any reports from the redevelopment commission? Seeing none, any announcements? I will entertain a motion for adjournment. So move. All, uh, that was um. Yes. Very good, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, yeah.
Meeting adjourned.